Order, can I get a motion please of the agenda for the September seventh, twenty twenty one? Regular meeting of council be adopted as presented. Counselor should I will make that motion? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carry. Can I get a motion please? The minutes of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carry. Can I get a motion please at the minutes of the September second, twenty twenty one special meeting of council? Be adopted as presented. Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carry. And we do have a couple of public hearings tonight. So the first is by law number two, two, six, one land use bylaw amendment. Um, so we will first start with any staff that want to speak. And then council have the chance to ask any questions and then we'll go into uh see if we have any registered speakers this evening. So. On by law two, two, six, one, uh acting sale bitter, anybody presenting on this?
Yes, I'll be handing most of this over to our planning team, but the first one Julia darling is going to present.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Darling.
Good evening, counsel. I'm just gonna share my screen. Make sure it works. There we go. Now I've lost half of my things that I needed. Okay. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Can you just see my presentation or do you see like my?
We see the presenter.
You see my first presenter. I'm sorry. Uh. It doesn't wanna give me the presentation on the presentation screen.
Try again, Julie.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm just gonna stop. Okay. There we go. I had to get it to shut off. I'm sorry. I'm just moving my things from screen to screen. So that I can still see what I need. And
You can't see anything right now.
Nope, I know. I'm just, I've got to switch screens that I'm sharing. I apologize. Share screen. Screen two. Let's try that. How does that look?
Perfect. Awesome.
Awesome. Okay. Now. So um, as you already know, my name is Julia Darling and I am the development officer here at the town of Edson. Tonight, I'm here to provide an overview of the land use by law textual amendment for council to review. As an overview, uh the applicant is applying for an amendment to the land use by law number twenty seventy to add retail establishment to the C two service commercial district to facilitate a new retail establishment to be built. After administration reviewed the application, it was determined that retail establishment is a list is listed in the propose in the purpose of the district, but not listed as a permitted or discretionary use. Therefore, administration is proposing that retail establishment be added to the C two service commercial district as a permitted use. This is just a map showing where the C two districts are. There's a hundred and seventy three properties that this would affect. Uh in conclusion, the first reading was given to by law twenty two, sixty one on August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. The proposed amendment aligns with council's strategic pillars to facilitate diverse and strong, strong economic opportunities and increase business opportunities. It also fits with the intent of the C two service commercial district. Administration recommends that council give second and third reading to by law twenty two, sixty one land use by law amendment. Thank you, and I will now open it up to any questions that council may have for administration.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation, Ms. Darling. Council, do you have any questions for administration? All right, uh thank you. Uh Steve, do we have any registered speakers?
Uh, no, we do not.
So with no registered speakers, do we have any correspondence that we've received on this matter?
No, we have not.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Darling. Uh so with that, we will close the public hearing for by law number two, two, six, one. Uh, we will now open the hearing for by law number two, two, six, two land use by law amendment. And uh is Miss Starly presenting on this one or is it Miss Chan? Oh, Miss Florizone.
You get a treat. Like to introduce myself, Carrie Florizone, senior planning manager, and I'll be presenting on the next item. So. Let me also attempt to do what I need to do here. Two, two, six, two. Okay. And mine is doing the same bizarre thing that Julia's wanted to do. Don't know why we're having that today.
You can see the presentation here.
Okay, sorry about that. Every time I try and do something, it just like is it is a trippy, trippy thing happening. Um anyway, sweet, it's short and sweet. By law twenty two, sixty two is being presented since the municipal government act has had some amendments under bill forty eight, the red tape reduction implementation act. Uh, the major change is in the appeal section, which came into force in December and the subdivision and development appeal regulation, which falls under the act which came into force on May twelfth. Uh, we're proposing to amend the land use by law to reflect the changes in provincial legislation. Previously, the municipal government board was the appeal body for subdivision matters with provincial interest. And the municipal government board did not hear matters related to development permits or land use by law amendments. The new legislation and regulations call for a land and property rights tribunal as the appeal body for planning related matters with provincial interest. And the MGA amendments have broadened the scope to include development permit appeals in some cases. The proposed by law amendment twenty two, sixty two adds definitions for adjacent appeal board and lane, just taking the opportunity to clean up some other things. Um, and repeals and replaces section twenty seven, the appeals and procedures referencing the municipal government act rather than rewriting it into our by law. Uh, making it clear that the signatory of a development permit or who the um development permit would go to for appeal. And uh that referencing that appeal is still subject to a fee set by council, which would be in our fees rates and charges by law. And that is the short and sweet version of that by law.
All right. Thank you, Miss Florizone, for your presentation. Uh, council, do you have any questions about uh the proposed amendments? All right, I think we're good. And Steve, any registered speakers?
No, we're no speakers registered.
And any correspondence, Miss Florizone?
No, our office hasn't received any.
All right, thank you. It's pretty uh straightforward with uh requirements under uh provincial legislation. So. Uh, thank you for that. We will close the public hearing uh to by law number two, two, six, two. Uh, we have no delegations. We will go straight to reading a bylaws. Can I get a motion please that council gives second reading to by law number two, two, six, one? Counselor viral make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. And Counselor Curry, would you like to give motion to council? We'll get through reading to by law number two, two, six, one. Counselor Curry will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion please? The council gives second reading to by law number two, two, six, two. Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion please? That council give third reading to by law number two, two, six, two. Counselor Sorenson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion please? That council give first reading to by law number two, two, six, three. Uh, counselor buyer will make that motion. And now we have Ms. Chan uh to present on by law number two, two, six, three. Take away Ms. Chan.
Good evening, council. Just let me share my screen here. Can everyone see the screen? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, council. My name is Mandy Chan. I'm the planning intern at the town of Edson. Tonight, I've prepared a presentations on the land use by law textual amendments by law number two, two, six, three. So before we start, I would like to mention that the initial published agenda contain like a minor textual error in the attached um draft of the by law two, two, six, three. In the updated agenda, the word hotel has been replaced with the word motel in draft by law section one G. So this reflects the actual intention of the by law as described in the RFD and indicated in the section one G itself. Now let's move on to the presentation. Okay, so as an overview, I will start by providing the background information on the amendments. And then I will jump into the administration suggestions along with the amendments overview, followed by the town's land use district statistic and maps indicating where the associated districts located in the town. And then in the end, we will open up to any question that council may have for administration. As background, administration received an application from K I assets corporation to amend the land use by law number two, zero, seven, zero to add hotel slash motel as discretionary use to the C two service commercial land use district to facilitate the development of the service establishments on the parcel land. Under the special land use provisions, section seventy eight in the land use by law, a motel slash hotel is rentable unit means a separate unit on a motel parcels used or intended to be used for the temporary dwelling accommodating for one or more people. Currently, hotel and motel is listed as permitted use in the C one retail commercial use. Uh, sorry, land use district as hotel or motel. And then in C three highway commercial land use district, it's listed as hotel and motel. And the last one is for C three, a business commercial slash light industrial language district. It is actually listed as hotel and motel, but it is separately. So as you can see, there are inconsistencies in the land use by law that address hotel and motel. So therefore, to ensure the consistency, administration proposed hotel and motel to be amended separately as motel and hotel could not be applied for the same use. Administration also proposed hotel and motel as a discretionary use in the C two service commercial district to allow the development authority to condition any approval given the potential impact on the neighboring land. As for the amendments overview, there are several components to the amendments. The first one is to add the definition of hotel and motel to section six definition, but separately. Second is to amend the two of the commercial district, which currently have hotel and motel together as one permanent use to separate it out to ensure that the wording is consistent. And also because it cannot be applied for the same use. Lastly, is to propose to add hotel and motel separately as a discretionary use in the C two service commercial district. As I mentioned before, is to allow the development authority to condition any approval given the potential impact on the neighboring land. For definition, administration proposed the amendments to read um on the left here is the hotel means a mo- sorry, means a building to provide accommodations of the for the public containing guest rooms serviced by a common entrance as well as general kitchen and dining or other public rooms. For motel, the definition is means a building or groups of building designed for the accommodations of the public containing guest rooms, each of which has a separate entrance directly from outside the building. So this table here lists the land use district that will be adding hotel to the left and to the right is motels. The land use the land use by law sections to each of the land use district listed on the slide is attached to the agenda package for council to review as additional and also reference material. To get a better understanding of how this uh amendments may affect the town, administration generated this table here as additional information. In total, four hundred and forty two properties will be affected by the proposed amendment. The majority will be C two service commercial land use district with one hundred and seventy three properties. And the least influence will be the C three, a business commercial slash light industrial land use districts. The slide here is to create a visual aid to show where the effect of land use are located within the town boundary. In summary, the proposed amendments intends to maintain consistency in the wording and will potentially accommodate the needs of the local community, providing a special service specialty service to the region and to increase tourism, thereby facilitate strong economic opportunities for the local business. Administration recommends that council give first readings to by law number two, two, six, three land use by law amendments and set public hearing for October fifth, twenty twenty one during the regular scheduled council meeting. Thank you for your attention and we are open to any questions that council may have for administration.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chan. Uh, council, I will open the floor to any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have on this matter. Counselor Bernard, apply through the chair to Ms. Chan. So basically what we're saying is uh this is just sort of housekeeping. We're adding motel hotel, so it doesn't really make a lot of changes at the end of the day. Except to be an advantage if you're trying to put a hotel or motel, am I correct?
For the chair to councillor Bernard, um yes, that's correct. So we're also, we're doing some housekeeping and at the same time we're adding it to as discretionary use to the C two service commercial districts.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? Once again, another example of how messy our current land use by law is, and uh we look forward to the revision of that. Always shocks me that we would not allow a motel or hotel in the C two district, but you'd allow in C one and C three. So anyway, uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, with no further questions or comments, I will call a question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion please? A council set a public hearing for October fifth, twenty twenty one uh during the regularly scheduled council meeting. Uh, counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carry. Can I get a motion please? A council give first read up reading to by law number two, two, six, four and council Sorenson will leave due to a conflict of interests. Who will like to make that motion? Counselor Bevan will make that motion and um is Florizone. The floor is yours.
Okay. Let's see if I can get this to do its thing properly this time. Perfect. Um, proposed by law two, two, six, four is to amend the regulations around billboards, specifically the five year renewal requirement. Committee of the whole directed administration to draft a land use by law amendment to remove that five year time limit back in November. Administration is proposing a by law to allow billboards as permanent structures. The proposed by law also clarifies where billboards are appropriate on larger parcels. Um, the existing text for section one oh, three, one B says that a billboard may be located within an urban reserve district or industrial district, wherein the sole opinion of the development officer parcel is substantially undeveloped. We are proposing the um amended wording to clarify which districts are actually allowed and what is considered to be substantially undeveloped. And the proposal is um less than thirty percent of the parcel area being utilized. Proposed removal of sections one, zero, three, one, sub D and sub E. And that has to do with that five year time limit. So removing those entirely from the by law. And that is our proposal.
All right. Thank you very much, council. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Bernard, by uh through the chair to Miss Florizone, Miss Florizone, I'm trying to name it. Uh, the five year, uh, I missed, just refresh me on if we take the five year out, what are we replacing it with?
Nothing. It would be a permanent um approval, just like a house or a restaurant or any other use.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Barer.
Thanks. Through the chair to Ms. Florizone. Um, I, I think you've mentioned this before a while back. Um, how many uh development permits uh would be affected by this in total? Or how many, how many um structures, I guess, do we have of this nature?
Uh, through the chair, I forgot to get that number, so I had it handy, but it would affect every billboard approval that we have in town that either expired last year and was renewed for one year this time around in anticipation of this amendment or any um other billboard that would expire in the coming years. That when they would come up for renewal, they'd be renewed as a permanent structure.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Counselor Curry, go ahead.
I raised my fancy hand. Um, through the chair to Ms. Florizone. Um, just, just uh for clarity. Uh, if we do this, there's still our um, our bylaws still will um cover enforcement of care and upkeep of them. So if, if one of those billboards was not in good shape after that five years, because sometimes that would be, we would still be within our rights to.
Yes, through the chair, there's a couple of different mechanisms. If it becomes unsightly, that would be covered through the community standards by law. We could approach it that way. If it is in contravention of one of the conditions of approval, we could come at it through a stop order. And if it becomes a full on safety hazard, we could approach it through a municipal order.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other further questions?
No, the fancy hand asked my question. All right.
Uh, thank you. Uh, my question was similar to Counselor Curry, so uh, thank you for that. Uh, if there's no other further questions, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion please? That council set a public hearing for October fifth, twenty twenty one during the regular scheduled council meeting. Counselor Bernard will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Uh, were you in favor, Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
We got some reflections happening.
Yeah, I know.
All right. Can I get a motion please? That council give third reading to by law number two, two, six, six, the mandatory facial covering by law. Counselor Shavard will make that motion. And uh, as everyone is aware, since our special meeting, uh, the province has announced a provincial masking mandate, which pretty much negates our by law. So um, we can either approve this one or we can defeat it. Um, I would suggest we would defeat it, but leave that to councils decide. Um, anybody have any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Counselor Curry, you have a question?
I have a comment. Um, I would just say I like, I will support defeating this because the provincial government has um stepped up to the plate. Um, however, I would uh hope that if by chance that goes uh away when our numbers are not similar to those of the province um that we would um relook at it just in case. Um, so I just hopefully though that it doesn't become an issue and the province keeps it in place until we have control of this.
All right. Thank you. And I believe we're at a hundred and fifty cases today, if I'm not mistaken, which is more than uh the city of St. Albert. So some perspective for you. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion defeated. Can I get a motion please? That council set the public auction date for the recovery of unpaid property taxes for November sixteenth, twenty twenty one. And Counselor Vire will make that motion. And uh, we'll hand this over to Acting CEO and Financial Services Manager, General Manager Sarah Bitner.
Thank you. Wish it. This is my head I'm wearing to do this. Uh. Every year, uh, the town will prepare a tax release listing as per the MGA relating to land and mobile homes. And we place a lien against these properties if they haven't paid their, their taxes and arrears uh on March thirty first, two years arrears for land and one year for mobile homes. Uh, we send them into land titles and Alberta registries. Uh, and then if they haven't paid by March of yeah, so this is we're looking at um, March two thousand nineteen arrears for land in twenty for the uh mobile homes. Um, we then have to prepare to take these properties to tax sale to recover our unpaid taxes. Today, we're just asking to set the date for the public auction. It is November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, which allows us time to meet all our advertising deadlines. Uh, prior to that option, administration will bring back the listing of the properties that still have not paid by that date. Uh, because council must set reserve bits on those properties prior to the auction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? We have to deal with this every year and luckily for the most part, people pay up uh before that auction date, but we do sometimes have cases where they do go auction. I will call the question then. All those in favor? Motion carry. Can I get a motion please? That council approved the cancellation of the regularly scheduled September twentieth, twenty twenty one committee, the whole meeting due to the upcoming municipal election on October eighteenth. Uh, Counselor Sorenson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, Counselor Wilkinson.
To the chair, I just wondered, you know, in this time with such high COVID cases, why would be canceling a meeting? I would assume there will probably be things we need to do in order to facilitate a better result at the end of this sickness.
All right. Any questions or any response from administration?
Uh, just, I think we um, a council needs to committee meetings, not council meetings. Uh, just because there's usually a committee meeting, we bring forward new items. And it's just limited time for this council to be able to um go through those new items with us. So uh, the council meetings will remain and we just uh canceling those committee ones because it's when new items usually come forward. We can still deal with any of the things that come up that we are through our council meetings, which are still going ahead.
All right, Counselor Wilkinson.
We have an emergency meeting and if something came up that we needed to handle through the chairman council, absolutely. Okay, so I think so.
And through to Counselor Wilkinson, that's where we have our city management advisory committee meeting. Uh, no decisions can be made at committee, so they know for the council, right? So.
But we just get the discussion, which yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carry. Can I get a motion please? That council approved the cancellation of the regular scheduled October twelve? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved the cancellation of the regularly scheduled October twelfth, twenty twenty one committee, the whole meeting due to the upcoming municipal election on October eighteenth? Councillor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing on all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council adopt the Vision Park revitalization plan? Councillor should not make that motion and we did have a presentation on this a few weeks ago. Do you have Mr. Latour here? If council has any questions, comments, or concerns? Also, can you, councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, we did have presenters come here and they just said that they even not been in touch with them since you presented. Is that true?
Through the chair to council, we have prepared a list of responses to their questions, but they haven't been issued to them at this point.
Okay, but they're prepared to go.
They're, they're prepared and ready to go.
All right, thank you. Counselor Bernard, through the chair to Mr. Latour. Did we ever get the chain link issue straightened out? Because as I used to be chain link installer, there's no right and wrong.
So through the chair to councillor Schwenhart. We, on the one diamond, we flipped the chain link. We are still having discussions about the gap at the top of the. Between. Yeah, dug out. We are, we are doing a hazard assessment on that and we want to have further discussions with the ball organization as a group. To determine what we're going to do with that spacing. Our consultant and internally, we don't see that as a hazard at this time. But we want to, we're looking into it further. And so, yeah, everything else is, is going well with the fencing. And it'll all be done next week. It'll be finished next week.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Councillor Byer.
Thanks, through the chair to Mr. Latour. I watched that I wasn't at the meeting that the presenter showed the set. I did listen to it though and was appreciative of all the questions that council asked. I also think it's a great plan that you guys have done. There's been extensive effort that's gone into this. It's been with no doubt a lot of work. I think it looks fantastic. I believe one of the councillors made a comment about kind of funding it and, and I would definitely support. Having user groups come up with an action plan on if this gets adopted, how, how they can proceed in helping out with, with this. So just wanted to mention that. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for the questions? Councillor Curry.
Through the chair, just to admin, I'm in full support of the plan. I echo what councillor Byer said. I think it's really, real, really well done. My only concern about this motion and just the way, just, just some clarity here that it is, we're adopting. The plan in principle, we're moving through with phase one. We have already approved the budget for that. But just really making sure that the adoption of this plan is just in principle, not there is an extreme budget related to the whole plan in its whole. So just clarity that this is just the adoption of the plan in principle, but no approval of the whole budget for this plan.
Yes, through councillor Curry, as with any plan, it's all subject to budgetary approvals.
Okay.
Like the Trails Master Plan and any of the other plans that we have.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Just want clarity of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that, I will call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried. We have no information items, no sundry items, council committee reports. We're going to August eighteenth and we will start with councillor Soranson.
All right, thank you. August twenty fifth to twenty seventh, that was a strategic planning session in Edmonton. Fantastic week, a few days, I guess. I always look forward to that week with council. September first at emergency advisory management committee meeting and September second at a special council meeting as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor Wilkinson.
August the nineteenth, we had an Evergreens in-person meeting, so I guess, woo hoo, we were lucky. We may not have another. August twenty fifth to twenty seventh, again, at the strategic planning. September first, Grand Yellowwood Public School Division invited us to their welcome back. And we heard the guest speaker who talked about, I guess, what most of us do if you're walking through the forest, you're forest bathing. Just so you knew that, know the new buzzword. On the second, we had a council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Curry.
Hi, same as councillor Sorance's, Sorance's. At the strategic funding, twenty fifth to the twenty seventh, also agree. It was really phenomenal, nice to get to spend time and really dig into things. The first, this emergency management committee meeting, and then the second, the special meeting.
Thank you, councillor Bevan.
On the first emergency management committee meeting, Yellowwood trustee, public school division meeting. And on the second council special meeting, that is my report.
All right, thank you, councillor Byer.
Thanks. On August eighteen, eighteenth, I had an Edson library board meeting, which was also in person, first one in a very, very long time. Which was very nice. And then following that, August twenty fifth to the twenty seventh, strategic planning session, which as always is extremely educational and informative. To meet during that time. And September first, the emergency management advisory committee meeting and September second, the special council meeting.
Councillor Bernard, okay, on September first, special meeting and on September second, the special council meeting. All right, for myself, strategic planning, August twenty fifth through twenty seventh. Emergency management advisory committee meeting on the first and the special council meeting on September second. With that, we'll move to financial. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved the twenty twenty year end financial statements as presented? Councillor should not make that motion. And we do have our general manager of corporate services, Sarah Bitner here. We did get presented on this a number of months ago, but we were waiting for some final details from the waste management authority, which have finally arrived.
That's correct, your worship. I am very pleased to present these statements for council's approval today. Yes, our witnesses came in June and actually provided to the town our, our position as of the end of twenty twenty. But we were waiting for some numbers from the I management authority that needed to be consolidated before we could approve them formally. With. The, we, there was, there was a question about whether we could use the draft form of the authority's figures or had to wait until they were approved by the board. Check with my auditor and say it's very common practice that we use those draft figures. We've done that before in the past. If anything happens to change, which is usually very, very rare, we would just deal with that in the next fiscal year. So yes, then we'll be able to send these off to municipal affairs, which is why they presented to council tonight for approval.
Council, you have any hard hitting questions for Ms. Bitner? Councillor Soranson.
Thank you, through the chair to Spitner. I can't remember what it's called, auditors' notes or auditors' private. Letter to council. Did that change after this?
I have not, I have not been informed, sorry, through the chair to councillor, I had not been informed. Had not been informed of any changes to the management business, so remain as it was presented to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. It was a clean audit, I'm very proud of you. Great work to you and your team. If there's no other further questions, we will call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried. That's like a huge weight off your shoulders.
Thank you.
Questions for media and public regarding items from this council meeting, Mr. Beth G? Do we have anybody on the line? Yes, your worship, Adrian Tate is on the left. Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of quick questions. Mr. Mayor, with regards to the bylaw for the billboards. With the addition of all of the different zonings where they would be permitted, is there any concern of clutter along the highway? And how many properties would that affect?
I will hand that over to developments in terms of amount of properties. I don't think we're changing zoning on billboards. That's for the other.
It was to move from urban reserve to Glenwood and light industrial and quite, quite a number of them, I, unless I misread that.
Ms. Florizone, are you there to answer that question? You're still muted. You're still more muted there, Carrie.
Okay, unmuted, that helps. I was just saying, sorry, Adrian, I caught the first part of the question and then I was trying to get back on. My understanding is your, your question is with the billboards, how many properties it affects?
Yes.
It would. Affect any property where billboards are listed use potentially. Acknowledging that billboards would still require development permit in those instances. So. I believe we allow billboards along nearly every property. Or it's, it's a listed in the districts along the highway and the clutter would be mitigated by that. Portion of the amendment tonight that says the developability of the site. And so if it's a fully developed site with like a multi-tenant commercial building, it wouldn't be eligible. For a billboard. If it had an office with a yard, it wouldn't be eligible for a billboard.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, your strategic planning, I was listening to your council reports. And I may have missed who all attended or didn't attend. Was it four to three in terms of attendance?
No, there were five councillors and mayor that attended. Myself, councillor Wilkinson, councillor Curry, councillor Byer and councillor Schenard. And the councillors that were not able to attend had some other commitments.
Thank you.
And councillor Soranson attended as well, sorry. Councillor Schenard, you weren't there.
I weren't there, no. I had a prior commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think that's it for tonight.
All right, thanks, Adrian. With that, we have no closed meeting session. Motion for German. Councillor Schenard, all those in favor. Motion carried.